We're on the traditional territory of the Tsavo First Nation. And it's on their land that we live, work and play each day. Prior to approving the agenda, we each time at the Canadian Home Meet review five of the truths and reconciliation calls to action. And I'm going to turn this over to Ethan. Did you want to speak to it at all?
No, your worship.
Think these are just strictly on justice and and the how many people that our First Nations are in custody percentage wise. So I as you go through them, I think it's intriguing to understand kind of a little bit of, you know, maybe how misunderstood our history has been. And I know I just mentioned to my wife, who we're having breakfast this morning, how we got it as wrong as we did many times. Is there any that anybody's read in that group of five, 26 to, what is it? None? We have an agenda in front of you and have a late edition, 2.7. Public works really not good. Pulse needs to be.
Sorry, go to your doctor's, a minute.
Second half. All in favor? We have one delegation at this point, 3.1 YMCA. Not sure who's making the presentation. Can you tell?
Hi, we'll have to defer to Dee Ethan as he looks the delegations for Representative YMCA Sarah.
Sarah, are you the one speaking?
Hi, I'm Sarah. I'm the new central manager of the VAC here in the Vanderhoof Valley. And I have my colleague with me, David Wolvan.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you well. And what was your last name, David?
David Wolvan, W O O L L V E N.
Okay, we lost you somehow. It hurts.
It's still going. I'm just sharing the screen.
Okay, so who's going to be making the presentation? You, Sarah, or Dee?
I will be leading the presentation along with David together.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
So I'm Sarah. I have joined the YMCA in September. And I have moved to Vanderhoof into 2017. And I have been in Vanderhoof nearly five years now. And David?
And hello, I'm David Wolvan. I'm the Vice President of Health, Fitness and Aquatics for Northern BC and also the YMCA of Greater Vancouver. And I've worked with the YMCA for about 35 years now, having grown up in small town Ontario. And I'm looking forward to looking forward to presenting with you tonight. I apologize, I'm having a little bit of trouble here. Technology not my friend today, but I am opening this up. Here we go. I'm sorry about that. Thanks for inviting us here to share today. Colin Reed, colleague with the YMCA in Kamloops and former YMCA of the Northern BCY CEO. And a former Vanderhoof High School graduate was touring the VAC and the ICC earlier this month. He was impressed with how far the Y and the district have come over the past few decades in serving the Vanderhoof community. He reminded us that the Y started serving here when we had a portable pool set up in the arena each summer and that we had led numerous day camps and recreation programs within the community even before we began to serve from the ICC.
And do you feel proud to be serving the community from the Vanderhoof? So Gerald and Heidi asked us to bring forward our plans for serving the community over the next year and to summarize 2021 coming out of the pandemic. Today, we start off with a summary of 2021, then moving into our business plan to 2022 and the future. We will wrap up with our critical success factors area we are working on to ensure we can best the community here.
Great. Our facility was open throughout 2021 and served various waves of the pandemic. If you could flip to the next slide, please. Thank you very much. The rise and drop of participation shows March break and summer as high points in serving the community from the pool last year. Participation was low as the Delta wave of COVID was in the community. After the maintenance closure, that's that big drop you see in September when we were closed for three weeks, then increased in November only to drop again with Omicron and the institution of the BC vaccine card. Next slide. Drop in participation was predominantly families and individual adults with youth next on the list. This chart shows how important the pool is to our families, often join us at the family rate and also to our adults who use the pool for exercise and socialization. Next slide, please.
This slide shows our group bookings in 2021. In 2021, the Nichaco Valley Swim Club accessed the pool over 1,000 times. And we also booked primarily children and youth groups from surrounding areas of Vanderhoof including Burns Lake, Fort Injus and Fraser Lake. Next slide. Swim lessons have started, restarted in May of 2021. Through the remainder of the year, we provided 233 children's swim lessons. So far into 2022, we have 158 children in swim lessons with summer and fall swim lessons planned. One C swim lessons compromise of three parts and a child-centered approach to water safety and swim skills. Levels begin with parent and toddler where parents join in water with their toddlers. Three to five years all part space in our free school program, levels above to deeper. Six to 12 years all part space in our learning to swim program, level outer to top seven.
Next slide. Lifeguards and swim instructors is the backbone of the pool, providing for safety and teaching every day. In 2021, we had two lifeguard training periods in April and July to train aquatic staff to provide for our important programs. Unfortunately, not all guards who were trained remained in the community with a number making decisions coming out of a positive summer last year, COVID numbers wise, to move on to post-secondary and other opportunities. Next slide. Lifeguards require specialized training and we've been successful at delivering this training to guards over the past years and in recent months. Traditionally, a career option that is entered into at a young age, completing lifeguarding and related courses from age 13 to 16, the pandemic interrupted the flow of guards for most of the country. Having trained 18 with their National Lifeguard Service award in 2021, we were disheartened when we lost many of these newly trained individuals as the summer's pandemic outlook was positive and they chose to move on. Our goal has been to expand our recruitment to a more stable population and have had some interest in recent months for future training. We will be launching a prospective lifeguard recruitment strategy later this month. Next slide. During 2021, the pandemic adversely affected our ability to raise funds through revenues. The operating subsidy was also curtailed by mutual agreements for a period of time to start the year as participation numbers were not necessarily reaching targets. Higher costs were experienced through 2021 in the following areas especially. Training, as mentioned, the spring and summer training, we worked to build our lifeguard contingent. And training costs were larger and revenues lower given the need for smaller classes and other pandemic procedures. To swell our ranks, we ran these programs at a discount compared to elsewhere encouraging participation. Maintenance and subsidies is the other area of concern. Our accountant had recorded these together in 2021, which we're breaking out for this year. The area of operation, this area of operation cost more in 2021 due to some breakdowns associated with extreme temperatures affecting HVAC and other systems and unforeseen wear and tear on our pulsar chlorine puck system. We did begin to see higher supply chain costs also towards the end of 2021 due to those supply chain issues. Next slide, please.
Looking to the future, as our communities are emerging from the pandemic, the YMCA across all of our socials and services is working to the best of emergency. Being those that have gone unfocused as well as looking to respond to needs. We believe we have weathered the pandemic and related challenges well. And while we foresee some challenges in the coming months, we have begun to address these. In our presentation, we'll further share our successes, challenges and directions. Participation at the pool in April 2022 has risen to over 2,300 visits from a low of 1,500 during the Delta wave and the DC vaccine pass requirement period. Today, this year, we have provided 158 swim lessons compared to just a few that started up in May of last year. Our major group bookings partner is the Nichaco Valley Swim Club. We provide them the lanes and lifeguard needed for training and practice seven times a week. We continue to respond to community requests, opening the pool for the late night lifeguard programming in June, working with a swim club to host a swim meet for the swim club across the north in June, and have recently added swim lessons convenient for the Royal Homeschool Association. As we look forward to the future, the YMCA, our core programs and services that have been successful as well as looking to meet our community's emerging needs. Open swimming time for play and exercise, swim lessons partnering with the district and providing a pocket of all in human areas with prostitution value. This chart indicates who uses the pool when during the week. Following our data helps us to decide when to run various programs, including swim lessons and aquatics. We are serving the community in and around Vanderhoof, including the First Nations communities and communities. Rascally by the NDS has been a constant group using the facility to help and serve children with special needs.
After a difficult year with system failures due to extreme temperatures, 2022 has begun as a much more consistent year. We're looking forward to our next capital project, the UV film insulation on the windows to help reduce the heat within the facility during the summertime. And we're investigating our supply chain around costs and predictability. Our next pool maintenance closure like last year will be for a three-week period, October, September of this year, to give us that annual opportunity to address any issues and do routine maintenance necessary. Next slide, please. At the VAC after Q1, we find ourselves in a safe place financially. We are still behind on some revenue lines, those lines that I spoke about earlier, primarily around supplies and training. And we look future, we look, sorry. With the future looking bright in terms of participation and COVID numbers reducing, we should see increased revenue as more and more people participate at the pool. Pending our work with the district, which we'll talk about more in this presentation, further changes to how we source and spend funds are going to be explored. Next slide, please. As some fees are mandated by our agreement, there is an opportunity here to change these if deemed necessary to cover costs while protecting the citizen's pocketbook, both of which are important. We will be reviewing this with district staff and adjust as necessary. Next slide, please. From a promotion perspective to help engage the community in our programs, the YMCA uses two main strategies for connecting with this community. First off, to promote to non-users and sporadic users, the YMCA pays for ads on social media and puts posters up around the community to entice people to come in and check out what we're offering. And the next slide has a couple of examples. Next slide. The second strategy is to retain our current users. To retain our current folks, we post schedules throughout the building, engage with them while they are in the building, if I could ask you to go to the next slide, sorry. Engage with them while they are in the building, putting our programs up on social media and having posters in the building. The more we can connect with folks who are in the building and show them what's coming next, the better the opportunity to keep them connected. And the next slide has a couple of examples. And next slide, please. To better understand our community's needs at this time, particularly coming out of the pandemic, we've engaged Stagecom, a marketing research firm that has also surveyed our local population in the spring and summer of 2021. While that research was combined with examining the needs of our communities across BC, this next iteration will focus on Vanderhoof alone to best understand exactly the challenges we need to rise with to bring the proper programming to this community. This research will identify for us the people, programs and services that are underserved within our current offering and if there are other opportunities for us to serve. Next slide, please.
At the pool currently, we have three people working in the leadership team, ten part-time and two full-time lifeguards, among whom seven are swim instructors too. To ensure our pool system are best managed, we have expanded the number of staff with pool operator level one certification. Currently, we have one lifeguard and three leadership. This certification covers all systems within this environment and helps ensure we maintain and track issues are will arise. By investing in our team, we'll keep our facility effective and efficient while we can charge and solve issues more quickly. We are currently searching for a program in athletics going here. Currently, we are receiving program support from colleagues in the Y, in Prince George and the Royal England. This summer, we were fortunate to receive funding for program staff at the ICC throughout the Canada Summer Job. These are permanently posted within the community for a bit June start. Canada, having missed two years of normal training and recruitment updates, has made a slower return to normal, especially for jurisdiction and where programming and service has been interrupted by the pandemic. Inflationary pressures are seeing wages increase across our competitors and we need to respond. Over the last eight months, the VAC has been closed for about 16 hours due to the due to sickness at the pool. Our health authority approved a product safety plan, requires two lifeguards on site at all times the pool is in operation. We are exploring a second responder board that also acceptable to help authorities to be able to open at various times with only one guard up to two hours when needed. While not ideal, it could be used at various times when a second staff may not be available.
Next slide, please. And the next one. We have identified four critical success factors for our next year. Firstly, the wages of lifeguards need to be reviewed with a possible increase to encourage recruitment and retention. We've reached out to district staff on this to begin the process. We do see that there is competition and inflationary pressures, as Sarah has mentioned. Secondly, we are starting a recruitment and training campaign later this month in an effort to again acquire and retain more permanent lifeguarding staff. And we're ready to train these people as well. We have been successful in relying on post-graduates in terms of high school graduates to do this, but it's not looking like that will be a sustainable way to do things in the future. Third, we're conducting research with Stagecom, a marketing firm that has surveyed Vanderhoof with us in the past to best understand where to serve our community going forward. And we are continuing to ensure pool operator level one training amongst our leadership staff to ensure that our facility gets the attention that it needs. Next slide.
We are aiming for an increase in the drop-ins and usage of the VAC as the pandemic is ending. Most lessons to be offered to the community will explore new recreational programs to best serve the community and additional aid operating hours at the VAC. Even before we hear from Stagecom, we have some opportunities that we'll begin to explore as we end the business plan of our operations. Some of these ideas include creating customized swim lesson plans for school groups and first station groups, providing more aquatic sessions to the community, offering special packages including birthday parties, exploring new recreational programs to meet the needs of the community and expanding the trainings offered. We thank you for your time today. This presentation contains a high-level point of more details from our annual business plan. We are happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Need some, a few references to the current lifeguard wage. What is the current lifeguard wage structure right now?
It is 1,750 right now, something after that.
And from there, it goes up based on years of service and training that they acquire, that we provide for them.
So what's the maximum rate? The maximum rate?
Right now, I think, sorry, I can't see if Sarah's answering. Right now, I think the maximum rate's around 1,950. We would be looking to, we have not spoke about this with city staff yet, but we have a proposal to begin around $20 per hour.
Did you want to speak?
Yeah. I was just wondering how that compares to wages in Prince George. Have you compared the life wage offered by other facilities to the one? How does that compare even if you increase it to 20?
We have, it puts us, we feel into a position where we will not necessarily be able to compete with Prince George. They're starting at around 22, but we haven't lost very many people to go there and drive there to do that. But that's a part of the conversation with staff to see if that is in fact the right area to begin with.
Other questions?
I got lots of comments, but I'll frame them.
So this is basically focused on the pool, but you've also referenced your recreational programs. And I guess to me is, so I'm just wondering where the recreational programs are and what are happening on those.
Sarah?
So currently, since December, we have started putting out the programs for the community on a weekly basis. We had our recreational supervisor who resigned quite recently to move forward to end the province. So, but we still have our programmer who is delivering and from the recreational side. And we are taking room bookings for the ATB's community center currently from the front. And all the front desk staff are training the front to take queries or any information regarding the recreational program and the room booking.
We haven't, across our network, our aquatics programs are bouncing back much quickly than maybe what would be your non-sports-based land programs. We're finding kids are returning to hockey, lacrosse, softball, baseball, those types of things quicker than they are to more discretionary programming. A part of our work with Stagecom will be to look at this and find out what we are missing in the community, if anything, to be able to best respond and best put in programming that will be of value to the community.
Oh, I'm just wondering, I know that the library offers, we do some funding for the library as well. And they offer after-school programs and other, and I'm just wondering, have you ever coordinated with the library to make sure that the programs that you're offering are at a different time or that you're not offering the same thing at the same time? Has coordination ever happened?
I'm not aware of coordinating with the library. I know we have coordinated with a few of the other agencies in town, but the library would be a really great one for us to reach out to. Thank you.
Yeah, I would encourage that. Thank you.
Well, I guess to me is, a question I had, it appeared to me that we had a really successful recreation week last week in Vanderhoof here. I guess to me is what involvement, you know, because of our contract with the Y on recreation, what involvement does the Y have in those kinds of areas? And are we, are we double booking here as it were? And I think that's a question that our community has. And I wish you, I wish you were here, David, because I think there's lots of questions that we probably have, you know, regarding this. And I guess to me is, yeah, so, you know, yeah.
Two, I'm sorry, I might have missed something. What happened last week there in the district?
We had recreation week, the full week. Heidi, you want to speak to it?
The area council, so they were involved, so they staffed it. The district will be paying for the staff, but they had a great turnout, over 40 people on Monday.
This was the, this was the event at the pool last Monday? Wonderful. I did hear that one well.
Yeah, but also all during the week as well. You know, we had, we had different recreation events. And I guess to me, I think, you know, you know, like this year focuses a lot on the pool, but what about on the, you know, I guess to us, if we had a summary of what recreation events are being planned and how that worked out last year, how many events we had? I don't think we've ever had a report back to council on that, how we, you know.
To my knowledge, I'm not aware of a report back on performance level statistics for the community center or like things like program participation.
I think that would be good if we could have, just to understand what we're contracting and, you know, what kind of comes back to the community and, you know, stuff like that.
I totally agree. I think we've had a lot of staff changes, right? So it'd be good to make sure everybody's still on the same page, let me know what the expectations are.
We have been providing quarterly reports on that, but I'll look back and make sure that we have that stuff in hand and make sure that we haven't missed any.
It would be good just to have with your staff and council, just a kind of a conversation, you know, at one of these means, just, you know, I think that we would understand when people come to us and say, hey, where are you on the recreation? It would give us a chance to have the input.
I'm in Vanderhoof every two to three months. I'll, with my next tour, I'll see if I can connect. So I'll, with my next tour, I'll see if I can connect through staff for an opportunity to have a conversation like that with Sarah and the team.
Great.
Just a minor question, just wondering with your YMCA webpage is here in Vanderhoof. You said somebody just recently resigned, so I'm wondering, who's keeping them up to date? And if they're linked, I forgot to double check a couple of weeks ago, I was looking for something on our DOV page. Just for who would be able to answer that. Just want to make sure they're linked together. There's some things we're working on in the community, talking about the available programs and rec opportunities, et cetera. I just want to make sure we have a strong linkage between this website, well, there's two of them, YMCA of Northern B.C., but also the Aquatic Center. And I'm just wondering, is everything current and up to date? Because you said there's so many changes, you know, to ICA, ICC, so how do we keep that happening?
We do have our own marketing team who takes care of the website and everything, and everything, yeah.
Other questions? Gerald, did you have a question at all?
David, Sarah, yeah, we have a lot of questions, but I'm glad that this is an important part of our community and we really appreciate the relationship we have.
Our email addresses are there. I'd be happy to also provide a phone number if anyone needs to reach out to speak to either Sarah or I. We're definitely available to chat about how we move this forward. And we're looking forward to working with district staff on where we go next and updating given the current circumstances.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Committee reports, traction retention. Anybody want to speak on anything at all, Councilor Seans?
Not a whole lot. We just had a meeting back there on May fourth. It was a, it was a good meeting, actually. We just discussed where the committee wants to go next. So we tried to narrow down a couple of items that we can really focus on for the rest of the term. We kind of had a pretty vast list. The goal for the next meeting was to just trim them down, make them our goals reasonable. Fortunately, tomorrow's meeting is canceled, so we're going to try to reschedule one for June sometime. And then, yeah, other than that, there's not a whole lot to dig on. We're going to dig into some stuff tomorrow, but we'll have to wait.
Just, we, like, the minutes that are on the agenda here, talk about our meeting with Raymond Kwan, who is with the B.C. Housing Hub. And he made a presentation at our housing committee meeting in April. I was, from the way he answered the question, I was kind of excited because I thought it would be a better fit for our community. And I think as we dug into it a little bit deeper, it's what the Housing Hub offers isn't a really good fit for Vanderhoof. But we decided we were going to hypothetically put together a scenario, a few housing scenarios for the community and throw them at the Housing Hub and say, okay, so would this type of a project fit within the parameters of the Housing Hub? What would the cost be? Because we're really not clear on understanding it. I think we had invited the Natchaco Valley, Natchaco View seniors committee to the, a couple of fellows from that committee to hear Raymond's presentation. They left excited, but then the feedback we got back was again that it wasn't going to be a good fit. So we just wanted to dig into that a little bit deeper. And we've overviewed at our last meeting, we kind of went from the very beginning, you know, some of the action items, where we've been, where we're at right now. And I don't have the draft minutes, Ethan does a much better job than I do at taking notes. But we, out of that, we came up with a lot, a few really good items that we want to continue to explore. Basically where we're at.
Yeah. We just had to refocus there.
Yeah.
Okay. We had a committee forest board meeting, they're there. A couple of questions or comments on those? Okay. Just on committee reports, everybody remembers that tomorrow we have a meeting with, well, some of you are involved with the water engagement session tomorrow. Also Northern Health tomorrow. And just before Northern Health, if someone wants to stop by, there's a wildfire update from Mr. Colerick Conroy. I'll be down here taking that. Okay. Then over to billing permit report. Mr. Dick, did you want to speak to any of this?
Can you answer any questions if council has any?
Yes, question, anything coming up as far as single-family dwellings? More people, I see you got one on the list there. But the thing is, are there others that are starting to get a permit?
Yeah, so I was actually working through one this afternoon that and rumblings of maybe a couple more, but.
On to questions, community services report. Speak to this?
I can answer any question?
Questions that anybody has? I have a question that was brought up just a little bit earlier, either David or Sarah brought up, that there's a swim meet here. Now, the thing is, I know I've heard a rumbling in the community that there's an issue about parking. We've had lots of ball tournaments and people have parked on our properties. Do we have any policy there of that they can't park or camp? Camp seems to be what hockey tournaments and ball tournaments and swim meets do on a regular basis. Yes?
Through the area council, we have all diamonds three years ago, three or four years ago. That is, they were stealing wood, they were causing damage. We're trying to encourage the groups to have ground which is located.
I just want to point out some positives in the support. I like the illustrations of getting rid of those old nasty garbage cans and updating. And then the vandalism cover-ups, that's a significant change. Not happening, that's really good. I don't think our community has had a ton of vandalism in terms of the spray painting everywhere, but when you notice it, it really stands out, so that was a great cover-up. Back to the camping piece, I know there's some requests received at the school as well. So I'm just, I'll follow up on that a little bit around that piece.
Through mayor. Baseball upset.
Yeah, and I hear, do we have a policy on that?
So through the mayor to council, we do have the streets and traffic bylaw that would provide for some of this. I'm not familiar with all the ins and outs of specifically time limits on parking. But we would also have the zoning bylaw and all the background regarding private property use as a campground. It's one thing to have one RV on a property that you park. It's another thing to host ten to fifty on private property.
So is, or is the swimming club then, or any of those other groups, are they being, as soon as they contact us, are they being encouraged then to book their camp spots over here?
That's what I've, I've said, you know. Campground, you need there. They, because in other communities, they like to camp out. So I have reached out to Ken to see if it's possible they could camp out in, you know, the school parking lot. Because I know in the past grads park, you know, and had campouts there. So that is a possibility. I've also said maybe they could rent the arena and they could set up in the arena. But they don't want to, they want to be outside, so.
Their interest is being close to the facility. And it's, when high-stakes, they like to camp out, they like to camp close to. The problem with that space over there, then it becomes an insurance issue when we got camping because, you know, whether, if it's tied to a school event and we can do things that way, there's a possibility. But when it's not, now we're opening it up for camping for everybody. The same thing that the DOV is facing, right? So we have to be careful there. So I think that is a concern. The grad thing was always unofficial, so.
I was planning, I was planning by students.
Yes. Last couple of years it was shut down, and now basically it's because of liability. So we don't want to get into that, that's another story.
So, hi, is there a campground, going to be a campground attendant this year, somebody?
With my budget, there is somebody there. We don't have somebody there on Mondays Mondays to Sundays.
Okay.
So you're low staff right now, so I'm hoping today, I'm there to answer any questions. Have, I leave my number, so I'm.
Okay, so on, can I ask? On Wednesday, so there's only going to be like somebody during the day then? And they'll go around and collect trees or what do they do? What is their?
So everything. So what I've set up is from Wednesday to Saturday, I have one of my casuals that arena, and I can only give them
Words?
A week, so I've used my maximum, so.
Okay.
And on the other days, I'm just, I don't know. The hard part is, is I have people there, but then it really does run itself that way.
Right, yeah.
It's just have people for the whole.
I get it, yeah.
So I'm trying to find times that are going to work. Like I know already, I have like times when they can rollerblader during the day. The problem is, is I would like staff there from six till ten p.m. at night so that any people coming off the road have a place. There's somebody there to answer any questions or they're there to help them, you know, sign in. So that's when I feel, and now we have rollerblading down there. And so I can see people are going to want after the school to have, you know, a staff member there during the day for rollerblading. Okay.
Just one more question, you mentioned there's something out here from the museum about the possibilities of the cafe opening again. What would the timeline would be if that's, if you're planning on that?
So when I talked to Salt and Cracker, they said that they are but they would be they would like to do it on the ground.
Questions for you? Which one is it? My favorite topic, park benches. Have you heard anything more? I can read your report here, but have you heard anything more?
Well, I've made two. Problem is, is they're supposed to be shipped down every week, but because there's other stuff. And if I cancel it, I've looked at Philly, looking at benches similar to what we've had and everything.
Where are these benches? They must.
Sorry?
Yes, sorry.
So. So it's not Prince George that would have to. Pick up truck, and that was very. So, and it just, there's a long stretch there with no picnic table. If we get maybe another picnic table in that long rowing in that area, and so, so if that could be. Okay, so today, I saw people out there, like Fridays, I can tell you. The town, I've had nothing but compliments, how the town has changed. Heidi, I want to just congratulate, you know, there was, I know it's not just you, you know, but the thing is, is it was a fun place to be here Friday afternoon. Didn't get to take part in any other afternoon activities. But I just noticed today, I went home and had a cup of coffee. I was looking out and saw kids out skateboarding. And I remember I always said, oh, what a cute couple they're out there, and they're having fun. I said, well, what makes them cute? She said, they're just, they're just having such fun. So are those our skates that they're renting or are they, they're coming on their own, it's ours, say?
Yeah, they're just charging it to me, they rent the helmets, they.
Good idea. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thanks. Our department. Questions for our CEO? Decision Tracker, would you like to speak to this?
So through the mayor to council, this represents all open resolutions going back to 2021, which are still deemed in progress in terms of implementing council's policy directives. Staff are here to answer any questions council may have on their implementation or timelines. And this is also a good reminder for staff and council of the existing priorities that council has given to staff implement.
Any questions, comments from anybody?
I assume the Helly Pot is coming to a different meeting, Dr. Day?
Through the mayor to council, that is correct. We, the intention was to have it at this meeting, however, just due to some feedback received after consultation, the decision was made to bump it to the next meeting, just to allow for more time to prepare the report.
I really like the layout, I'll just say that, too. It's nice and easy to follow.
Through the mayor to council, I just want to note, so on page four, you can see where it says complete items, so all the rest after that are complete. Is this the format you want to keep and then cut some off at the beginning? Or do you, would you like, because the public sees this, or would you like the completed items to be sent to you with the reading file like I did last time? Or I just want feedback on how you want it presented, how much, how far back we go with complete items? Because it'll just keep getting longer and longer. So just an idea for me.
Once they, okay, so once they come completed on the reading file, then they're taken off of this list?
No, it's this or the reading file, not both. This, this takes about over an hour to produce this.
I accept, so.
Either or.
I've lost you here.
So either, this, this, if I keep all the completed items on, it's just going to get longer and longer as we add new ones and more marked complete. So I can either keep the complete ones on here for, say, the last six months, and then things will fall off, or I could just send. And then things will fall off, or I could just send you every week completed items in the reading file.
Yeah, and that's why.
Wouldn't go on the committee of the whole agenda.
That's my question. Because once they go to the reading file, they wouldn't come on to this.
If that's what you want. I could just send them through the reading file or they could be in the document on the committee of the whole agenda.
But then this list would just be longer and longer all the time.
Or I could cut cut back how many completed items I include on it.
Do you know I'd like to have the completed items on the reading file, then you can take a look at them and you know that these are off the the tractor list?
Does the public have the opportunity to look at it both ways? So that's my point, and that's why I like it on here, because then say you cut it off at six months. And left it on here. So then if somebody's looking at our agenda, they see that. They can go back, see, oh, yeah, this was discussed in a meeting six months ago. Look, it's done, it's complete. Some accountability there, people can see what's been happening. It it shows some progress.
So how long would you keep them on here, the completed items?
You mentioned six months.
Well, I was just taking a number. Or they go on completed once and then they.
Be reasonable.
Or months.
Six months is a long time, right?
Depends like what numbers are we thinking of there, right? Like where does this go back now?
March seven.
This is one month, well, just a little over a month on here. March seventh, April twenty.
Then March seventh, twenty. As I look at it, because if you look at the first page, it's from twenty twenty one, right?
But that's the current, those items are still active.
So when they go on, they'll be down the other one, so.
Three months.
Yeah.
For people to look at some of it.
Any comments, Joe? Hey, any comments on the decision tracker?
It is a good format.
Okay, advocacy initiative update.
Through the mayor council, this is a monthly update representing um advocacy efforts as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Um, and again, this is an opportunity to review current advocacy advocacy work that's underway by the district and. Um, status as well as as we've done in previous months, talk about whether or not these items could make sense to continue having staff time invested into.
So if something stays on is on here and. Um. It doesn't really um go anywhere. And I guess to me is I really struggle where how much effect we can have on the old growth deferrals.
So with the old growth deferrals specifically, um. As councils aware, the province has advanced its expansion of the old growth deferrals initiative. Um, this may be better with. A regional and even proven province-wide advocacy effort rather than banner proof on its own. Um, given this the scope and scale of this initiative.
I don't know what what any of you are hearing on it. I guess to me is is I just I just am concerned that um. You know, staff time is is a premium at best, and the thing is is uh. Just leave it on for now or do you what's your thought? How much time is this taking? Is it taking quite a bit, the old growth? For.
So in in the initial stages, there was substantial staff time being invested in the old growth file. It's it's cooled off since then. Um, last month, I would say, I'm looking to you, Vincent, we we invest in maybe four hours.
Yeah, like we had the community task force meeting, but I didn't do too much else.
And then there is the call noted here with the uh regional that regional manager for not Vulcan and Chaco, but the um Stewart Resource District.
I don't know. I just I just think that. Uh, it's gone down a road that um I don't know how much we as an individual.
It connected and updated. I don't know if there's much more to do than that. Back burner and be aware of it and things change like it was before we we made aware of that and can reengage, I think. But right now it's sort of simmering, it's just.
Okay, any other questions? Hey, a fun one. Procedure by law.
I suppose they you skipped over the Y M C A report and I believe Sarah still can answer the question.
Oh.
You are kidding me. I can't believe I did that.
And five point seven.
There you go. Thank you. Might as well just really blow it up. Hey. Y M C A five point five. Any questions?
You sort of interrupted her presentation and asked.
So Sarah, with the upcoming swim meet, number one, when is that happening?
Uh, June twenty five and June twenty six.
I know there's a a challenge of allowing spectators to come in and watch the events. Have you thought of streaming that event or those events as it comes forward?
Yeah, we are working with the president of the swim club to see whether we can stream. Working with Heidi here to see what we can do to stream it in the arena and send the projections over there.
Because it would be great to get as much exposure to the outside world or speak that we need to have, so.
Joe, what did you do in Houston on these kind of things to 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 get? I guess I hear what John's saying is, okay, how can we? Well, like it's gonna be some kid that also says, ooh, I wouldn't mind doing that. And oh, I didn't know that's what a swim meet was. I still don't know what a swim meet is, but I sense I'm gonna be there for two days. There you go, watching my grandkids. But the thing is, is I think there's probably a kid out there. That, you know, if they had the chance to see what it was, would go like, oh, well, this is.
So I don't believe the Houston leisure facility hosted a swim meet during my time there. Um, so we never ran into that issue. Um, that said, live streaming wasn't a discussion for any of our events until COVID nineteen hit us. And really, that's when the tech capabilities would have been available. Um, because fiber, any any. Up until twenty sixteen, Houston had at best. Ten download, one at one upload of megabit per second internet speeds.
Um, yeah, so the thing is, no, there's no, there's no room in there for benches at all, right?
Um, boys, that maybe we put some of our bleachers over the windows.
You wish don't plan when we design the place.
Will they be able to see through the windows?
Those aren't coming till October, so we're done this year, come next year.
Not the windows in the inside, like. You're thinking bleachers for outside, the windows. Oh, I see. Okay.
It's only allowed so many people.
Right. Yeah, okay.
The other option is to train the big pool. Uh.
No.
Well, no, not the big pool, but. Use your pool, because then they have.
No.
No.
They do that in other places to train.
Really?
Yeah. That's part of the.
I'd have to wrap my head around how to do this.
Seem efficient.
Yeah.
And if we can get this year with that remedy and then hopefully by next year, we've got some tech in place. We've looked at it for the arena and for the for the aquatic facility. So by then, you know, as long as we keep that one on a front burner and get it done. I think we'll be good. Buying some time this year.
Good. Any other questions? Okay, five point seven.
So through the mayor council, this is um the public works update for um April twenty twenty two. Um, as late as him. Um, our director of operations can speak to the report of council with like a. Coles notes version of the report. Um, otherwise, the information is in there for if council has any questions. Chad, do you want to do a calls notes?
Sure, I can go through this if mayor and council would like.
Yeah. Good in that we just got this and gives us a bit of an up update on where we're at.
Okay, so uh, right at the beginning, some of the completed projects are. We did some training for the generator for all staff and some Josh, which is joint occupation. They know. And some asset management, city reporter stuff, um, which is exciting to uh. Be engaged in part of that. Some other uh capital project items are. The steel truck, dump truck, janitorial contracts, asphalt paving contract. And crack ceiling, those contracts were awarded. And so. We do a little bit of work down at the boat launch. Down there for uh. Access in and out of there. Ed Park multi-use uh path lighting uh is completed. Also, the airport C C R regulators, those are also.
Okay, so that all the issues that we had before with with airport line are are done?
I'd say for the interim, they've they've been fixed and the North No Town has been taken off. So any issues since they've been replaced.
Those you could hear there. I did have one handle. I was just wondering, Chad, um, the the asphalt that was put down last last year, I guess. I understood there's a warranty on it and I'm just wondering where that that's at, because I've had some concerns with.
Mayor council, some of the 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 contract, the contractor was contacted.
Okay.
And they will come back. They're aware of some of the uh paving areas that we've had in question.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead.
They actually came, I called them and the next day they actually came and looked at it, so they're.
Have you have you traveled like all of the paving that we did last year because? You know, I heard, you know, there was an area on the on the other side of the bridge that came up, so just if. If if they can check every all the areas, um, you know, and bend in the park. Leave in the park and see some potholes are.
That's basically what I'm gathering.
Anything else?
Any any other questions? Um.
Okay, maybe if you just want to go quickly down here ongoing, I see I see you're uh doing up some new banners. Uh, are you replacing all of them or just the ones that are that are missing?
No, so uh all of the banners will be replaced. So those those will be done. Um. Water main project should be completed in the next couple of weeks. I think six tie-ins left. And then some coronation.
Do you did we? This to be that big a project? Just never seen project go that long.
Trust me, I live over there. I didn't think it was gonna go that long.
Okay, any questions on that page?
One last item at the Riverside Park erosion mediation, that's the contractor has started.
Question, is there only one kind of willow or was it that's a kind of willow? Is a willow a willow?
I don't know. I'd have to get back to you, but I do know that they had to go further out because some of the willows in town had already.
Well, once I told you the kid, willow was a willow.
You learned something new there, Tom. Riverbank willows.
Good. Thanks. Now the fun part.
Through the mayor council, um. Our first report for the governance of priority session of the community hall is um regarding a draft council procedures by law. Um, our corporate officer is here to give council kind of a calls note summary of the changes to the bylaw from the free. From the previous bylaw. Um, and also answer any questions council may have after the presentation. Valene?
Thank you through the mayor council. Uh, so this bylaw is based on um. You may notice this is a lot longer than the last bylaw. It is kind of a one stop shop, so it includes some things about like conflict of interest and stuff that's included within legislation, but I put. Kind of a summary in the pertinent parts within the bylaw, just so it's all in one spot. I think it's handy for councils and for um. Election as well to be able to look in one spot. Um, I based mostly on other municipalities, best practices, new practices, um, what other places are doing that's new and um. That kind of thing. Experience. So I just in the report, I did outline uh what the procedure by law has to do and what it must also provide for. That's all from the community charter, so there are certain things that you absolutely have to have in your bylaw. So those are all included in this proposed bylaw. Um, some of the uh so in I went through with each heading and saying whether they were new or if it was just expanded from the previous bylaw. Um, so the first part is just like standard bylaw wording, added definitions so that they're consistent throughout the bylaw. Uh, the timelines of how we produce the the agenda and what we do with late items. Uh, public comment is new. It is based on a couple of other municipalities. It's usually for items that are not included on the agenda. If the public wants to come and stand up and speak for three minutes about a concern they have. They're generally Ellie, Mina, and a few other courses I've done, they. Some cities don't have opportunity for the public to speak at all at their meetings because it's a business meeting of council. They speak when there's a development variance permit or a temporary use permit or somewhere where you're soliciting input. So this is just kind of a way to get the public able to speak. When they have a concern, they don't want to write a letter, they want to do it in public. It gives them kind of a a time to stand up for three minutes and speak. Uh, counselor items. Is kind of expanded for counselors. It's not just your committee reports. That's where you would bring forward and notice a motion. Um, any committee things, any announcements that are going on that you want to bring up. And you can also list the meetings you've been to as well, although I didn't say that's what it's for. So it's just, it gives counselors uh. A little minute to themselves to get to speak. So that counselor items is not during the nomination period and it stops at the beginning, start stops at the beginning in the nomination period. And ends uh the meeting after a general election. Uh, it is more of a description of the purpose of committees of the hall, so that wasn't in our last bylaw. Uh, goes through closed meetings, electronic meetings was in the bylaw, I just moved where it was. Uh, goes through quorum, uh, docu- what happens when someone comes to a council meeting? Um, a public hearing or if they're talking about a variance or a temporary permit, if we have any, what happens to those documents? Uh, recording in minute meetings, it just we had nothing about that in there. It just gives the corporate officer the authority to record them and share them in live stream eventually. Uh, summarizes the conflict of interest. That's all in legislation. Summarizes the conflict of interest. That's all in legislation. It's just a brief summary. So it's all in. Procedures bylaws have to do the same for committees. So that's in there. So it was just brought over to its own section. Severance is standard bylaw wording. If someone challenges a bylaw, they're only challenging one section, not the whole bylaw. The inaugural meeting that had to be changed because the election date has changed. So now it has to be in the first 10 days in November, not December. The time and location of the meetings, delegations is much expanded to say who can speak. Those are if we invite them, what the difference is than if they invite themselves. Special council meetings has been expanded. Motions, a lot of that is in Robert's rules of order and in legis, not as much legislation, but so it's just included in here to have it all in one place. How you vote, including when you're participating by video conference, adjournment. We you never need a notion to adjourn a meeting. If you end the agenda, you can just chair just declares the meeting adjourned. There is a a portion to where counselor can counselor Siemens could make a motion to adjourn. Counselor Murphy can second it in the middle of the meeting. Don't get any ideas, but it's and it's not debatable. I don't know why. So it's just about the adjournment of meetings. That's for committees as well. There's no need for a motion to adjourn. How the minutes are prepared, what they have to include, what you do with them after they're adopted. Conduct and debate. Two different places. So it's just a little more formality around it. And description of bylaws when they get their readings, approvals, et cetera. And then public hearings and public comments on permits. So that's like the development variance permits. And I just did a highlight there. If you're on your iPad, if you click on that community charter, section one twenty four, it'll tell say what a procedural bylaw has to have. And then the government of B C has a section on their website about municipal procedure bylaws. Any questions or concerned, it's council's bylaw. So just let me know.
I have a question. So just under delegation, I just to clarify.
What numbers?
Oh, five point five. And it's five point five A I. I just wanted clarified. So if I am requesting a delegation, if I would like to invite someone to a council meeting, do I then? The way I'm reading it and I'm, do I need to fill out a delegation request form?
You if just counselor Lozay is asking, I would say the person making the presentation would fill out the.
Okay, the person. So if I want to invite somebody, okay. To come and make a presentation at our meeting, I would have to ask this person to.
To make a notice of motion for council to invite someone, I would say then they don't have a time limit and they don't have to fill out the form. But if it's just one counselor asking if someone could come and present.
Wait, time to make that notice of motion like during my.
It's in there in notice of motion.
Okay.
It's you can do it during counselor items at a meeting.
That's right.
For the next meetings.
Thank you.
If it's just someone you're inviting to present, then it's.
She filled it out. Okay, because I have someone else in mind. Okay. That and then can I ask my second question?
Go ahead.
Okay. So from now on, if I am, I have to say through to mayor, is that the new format, the new?
That's the formality. Gerald doesn't let staff do it.
I know you folks do it. So if I'm addressing through to mayor and then I ask.
Well, you if you're doing it to to the staff, okay. It's good to do that. You know, if you go through and say, okay, I'd like to ask a question through to the staff. You know, and the thing is, I think, you know, go ahead, Gerald.
So through the mayor to council. The intent behind speaking to the chair is to depersonalize the meeting. It's a procedure that's reflected in going back to the House of Commons. And the idea is that instead of speaking to the person you may be talking about, you're speaking through the chair and recognizing their role in mediating the meeting and also not going down the road of saying say Cindy, for example. Cindy, how come we can't just do this? You're speaking to the chair. So through the through the chair or through the mayor in this case. I would propose that we as a council do this.
And so that but when I'm asking Heidi questions, just I can just.
Technically, you should be going through the mayor for a meeting procedure, but it's a it's what.
No, that's fine. I just I just needed clarification on that. That was.
I think I think the biggest thing, I go back to Gerald, and I don't know why. And you can blame it on me.
Oh.
I have, I chair this way different than I do the region district. Okay. And I've noticed that around this table, sometimes it gets emotional and it can get personal. Okay. Nothing bad, nothing awful has happened. We've all enjoyed each other's comment, but I don't, I think. I the biggest thing is this is the place to do the discussion. Okay. You want to get all the questions answered here. And as they tell you in high school, no question is a dumb question. You've got to you've got to get them out. Okay. But if if you sense that somebody else is going to jump in, then it becomes personal. You know, and I think, you know, I I don't know how. You know, you know, but it just, I think to me to have a speaker's list. I can tell you, I very seldom have a speaker's list here. You know, you know, kind of a thing, whereas I can tell you, I always run a speaker's list at the R D me, you know, it just is the thing that so I think it takes that time for everybody to get and ask their question out. And nobody jumps in and interrupts them kind of thing. And I I think that's the biggest thing is is that. But it's my issue. I've allowed it to happen and sort of.
No, I'm not. I'm just I'm just trying to understand.
Consequently.
I would love it though in there if we could keep addressing themselves through the mayor by speaking or speaking through the mayor, but not saying you have to say through the mayor, like there's other ways you could say the same thing, do the same thing. To me, just that repetitive of through the mayor to through the mayor to drives me nuts. Like there's there's other ways of saying it, right?
Yeah, no, and I and I think I think Willene said that quite. Yeah, good, right in the game is 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 that the formal way? Yeah. But the thing is, is I think the biggest thing is what we want to do is rounds the table here to be able to fully discuss something without anybody.
Personally, I think the speaker's list is more important than the mayor part.
Yeah.
But a lot of places still use that through the mayor. Or once generally, like just based on past experience, the first time I speak at a council meeting, I would say through the mayor to council. And then I would just say, thank you, Mr. Mayor, every time I spoke like this. Different places do it differently.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, I have a question. Five point four. So the thing is, is that basically our agenda now is is in that format.
So.
Number four is.
Yeah, I'm shocked. So when we had a bylaw that had to go for adoption, I had no idea where to put it on the agenda. Because you have to have a section for that because it has to come before public comment or before public thing, public questions on agenda items. So I put that in there because we might not, we might use it three times a year, but it has to be somewhere. After a public hearing, nobody can talk to the bylaw. So it has to come before public. So I included in the last attachment is kind of a mishmash of a bunch of past agendas that I put into the new format, just so you know what it would look like.
And thirteen point one four.
Cender amend a motion.
Around here, but yeah, rescind it. Okay. So number A. So if you voted in favor of a resolution and it's adopted by council, then a council member who voted in favor of it can move to rescind the motion at any time.
Right. That's a, I think that comes from Robert's rules. It's definitely in Ellie Mina's book of parliament.
And that I did not know. I I've known all the most of the rest, even though I don't do them. But fourteen six, I did not know that. I thought it was always the opposite.
Hi, it's defeated. It was what? It would be carried? Doesn't happen.
It happened just recently and I think I said pass.
We must think of it.
I'm sure you nodded at me and go like, oh, yeah. I hate to even think of what it was, but sixteen point one, my question is should it be in this on how long it stays on on social media? We talked about three months before. Would that not be in in the procedural?
That would be part of a records retention. Because it's a district record, so I'm not sh, we have a records management bylaw. I haven't looked at it closely enough yet to see if it mentioned. Retention.
Wouldn't it be that it only stays on civic web or or the district website? And I guess to me is my personal opinion is I only want, I think it needs to be up there and kept up there, but then the next minutes go up there. Then that one bounces off.
Are you speaking just about the recordings?
The recordings. Is that's what this is talking about. So the thing is on Facebook or LinkedIn, you know. You know. I just think it's it's more clear, more understanding if it's if it's the most recent. Those are up there and.
Well, we have a YouTube channel and it all we can put them all up there by date and it's free. And so the the public can go back to whatever meeting they want to watch. They're indexed by date. And when we start live streaming, then it'll live stream to YouTube or Facebook and then so it's it's just like the minutes there, the minutes are there from two thousand and eight. People can go back and read the minutes, they'd be able to go back and watch all the recordings. But that's part of the retention, different bylaw.
Will come up later on then.
Well, it's a it's a district record. So when we get more into records management policies and bylaws than it was.
What do you say? And who's who's making the decision how long? I'll put this over to you, Gerald. Who's making the decision now how long these recordings are on on our social media site?
So through the mayor to council, absent any policy direction from from council. It falls to our corporate officer under the general authority of the records manager bylaw to say how long those are those are up on the website.
Do they have any feelings on this besides me? Drew over, drew over through the beer too. I don't know. I I'm just going to tell you my feeling. One set of the eight minutes, you know, and and that's, you know, what I feel, I, you know, to me. I want it to be a record that people can go there if they want a record of the minutes. Those are writing and I agree with that, that you you should be able to go and get those and see that. But the recordings. My personal feeling is that that one recording at a time on there is is sufficient.
But my but my understanding is that you can go back through the YouTube channel like so so that's so I would be able to access last year's. If I wanted to watch a recording. I'm a I could go back a year ago and still have access, not on the YouTube channel, right?
On my YouTube channel.
Yeah, okay.
If if that's what we want, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Okay, so what I'm saying is what what does council want? And I've told you what I want.
On two different.
Okay, I want, you know, one set and one set of recordings up there. And then when those are replaced, then it goes, you know. And not here much.
So what's best practices? You said you looked at a lot of these things that, you know, going through other best practices from other councils. What's best practice on that?
For recordings, I didn't really look because it's not part of this bylaw, but I know in my former job, we kept them forever. Until if we ever ran out of space, we would take them down, but it's on YouTube, so.
Is it something we want to stop just to glance briefly at and just see other municipalities? Because to me, it's there's pros and cons either way. Why did some choose to to keep them and why go away? See your point, it's it's in print, you cannot access it, so it's not, it's not disappearing, but you know, I'd like to know if they ran into situations where it became a problem by keeping the last three years or four years or whatever it is.
I can tell you that I've checked with Prince George one that they have one set of minutes up there. Quinell, is that not right? Quinell is one set up there as well, is what I was told.
The mayor to council, Quinell started recording council meetings after after I had left there. Before that, it had been televised through the community channel that was run by, I believe, Shaw at that time.
I I understand from both Quinell and every every municipality that I have heard and I have heard about this country. One set of minutes up there at a time. And if it's if it's if people want the minutes they're writing, they're there forever and they can get it from them. Yes.
Through the C O to mayor to council, just double checking, the Prince George has archived all of their videos all the way back to twenty fourteen. So you can access both their agendas, their videos and their minutes for all their council meetings.
It it could be their access from their website, they're telling you. So on our website, for example, if it has most recent, they would have a link to the agenda, the minutes, the video, and maybe that's replaced every time they have a meeting. I think that might be what what they're saying.
I'll 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 go back and check with the mayor. I did talk when we originally talked about this, how they did it. But anyways, yep.
I need to know that's for the new another bylaw.
Yes, I was just going to say that will be in a different bylaw coming to a later time, right?
Can I just make a note of a few? I just wanted to mention that there are a few, since the bylaw was revised and stuff moved around all over the place. There are a few places in the bylaw where section numbers are wrong. So those will be fixed when it's referring to a section that's wrong because the whole section moved. And just so the bylaw doesn't have to be amended every time there's an election or something happens, I just want, I was going to change the wording for inaugural meetings to be in the first 10 days of November, which is what the legislation says. Instead of the first Monday of November, in case council ever changes meeting days, then we don't have to change that. And then there are just a few leftover things. So when it comes for for readings, there'll just be a few of those little things cleaned up.
So this committee of the whole mean, you want to do the first three?
No. No, the recommendation is that the committee of the whole recommends council give three readings to council procedures by law. So it will come to the next regular meeting for readings, then it has to be advertised twice in the newspaper and then it would come for adoption.
Okay. Is anybody ready to make that motion?
Make the motion.
I'll second that one.
We're discussion. All fair, close, carried. Tea hanger recommendation.
Through the mayor to council, next report is the tea hanger study recommendations. And our the author, our management intern is here. Um, and our, the author, our management intern is here to speak to the report if there are any questions.
Any questions?
This is one point eight billion dollar estimate. It's nothing to do with construction or anything. It's just a prep work and.
Through this mayor to council, uh, council Murphy is correct that the one point eight million is a class C estimate to prepare the grounds for construction of a tea hanger, but that this does not include the building itself. I'd refer to the director of public works, our CFO, to ask if we have received any quotes or if we've even started exploring the tea hanger construction. It doesn't look like it. This is just to develop the site such as taking care of that swampy area and building a degree, and then finishing establishing whatever roads are necessary to support construction activities. The roads currently are a little bit sunken so that they're not really firm enough to handle all the construction equipment that would drive through for these improvements.
And I'll just back John up. I think that's a really good point. If you're talking about one point eight million to begin with and then don't know what the cost of the next set of projects is, it's really tough to, to make a decision because if that's a go no go, you don't want to put one point eight million in for a no go, right?
So what's your recommendation to council?
It would be good to find out what the next step would be. Where we commit to this. It would be good to find out the cost for the whole project.
So what did this, this, um, this, uh, is the number thirty five thousand, sorry?
It was, I want to say twenty five, twenty.
So do you want to spend another twenty seven thousand? And I guess that's my question. So, and you know, I'm sensing that everybody here is kind of, you know, with the one point eight million dollar, you know, two million bucks and you know, letting we've done over the public works building this past year, you know, we've got a billionaire. You know, with long past due, you know, uh, you know, twenty five years ago, it was, it was a priority and I had so long until we have a proposal like, like, I guess to me is, question to you or Vincent, I don't know which one answers is, is that, it's kind of a chicken and egg, you know, like the thing is, how do you, if you don't have somebody that you know is going to come in and, and pay this kind of money for a piece of property here, you know, how do you go, you know, because this, this site, those will be, that's going to be the most expensive real estate in the area.
Mayor to council, so, so the recommendation from my, from staff, which I've endorsed, is to get this in, onto the list for the five year capital plan for deliberations during the next budget cycle. This doesn't mean that it has to be in next year's budget per se, and as such, council does have the authority and the policy choice to set go and no go, go conditions either at this meeting or during budgetary deliberations. One of the go, one of the go no go factors could be that there has to be builders for each of these lots for it to go ahead. Um, the other thing I'll, I'll note is that the tea hanger conversation is a bit of a chicken and egg conversation because for the sub, for the cost to be worth, worth sinking in, we would need a proponent to go out and build tea hangers. To get someone to build tea hangers, there has to be sites ready to be serviced that we're willing to pay for. But to do that, we need the financial authorization of council proceed, which looks back into the chicken and egg scenario that I had talked about. That's, that's where staff are coming from with the recommendation is to start the conversation so that if there are proponents who want to go and develop tea hanger, tea hangers, we can begin that conversation and if council deems it desirable, come forward to the table with financing to develop the report.
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense. So what we under, we understand what needs to be done there for if somebody did want to come in and build in, and that's important. We know what needs to be done. We would know approximately what the cost would be. Don't change a whole heck of a lot, like, you know, in the next year. So I think that's reasonable just to.
I agree with the last, uh, few comments that have been made. I'm, I'm a little, I guess I was a little naive. I was hoping that some of these questions or, or things we should consider would have been answered within this. So I didn't, I guess it, it just wasn't its scope, but there's, there's too many things that they're unknown still when you talk about, you know, the, the requirements of aviation, land use in the vicinity of airdrums. I thought that would have been answered in here so we would know where limitations are and parameters. The electronic interference of navigational systems, why is it, okay, what it, why wasn't that answered for? Like, these are the kind of pieces that need to be dealt with prior to that investment, if we're lucky enough to get grants around it. So I think that, that should be go along with what our CEO talked about, putting it on that, that list, but then also finding ways that we answer those pieces as well. I, I don't think there's going to be anything that isn't possible because obviously these things happen at other airports and other situations, but to not have that, uh, information. A little disappointed it's not there. We didn't do this study, right? Not staff, I'm just saying. I was hoping that we could have a little more meat to it.
Uh, to the mayor, through the mayor to council, uh, so a couple of the items that have not been addressed, that would all depend on the development of the tea hanger and what the features of that building are. A couple of the items that they talked about, light pollution affecting air traffic, that would depend on how much exterior lighting there is on the new building and what that design looks like. That's the thing, of course, that we'd have a bit of control over if we were to request that scope, but that's why that wasn't included. L and M is just looking at the structure of the ground beneath the building and seeing what it would take to be built up. The things like requirements of aviation and land use, that would depend on the use of the tea hanger, the structure of it, the light, sign of obstruction, that all depends on what that building, or what building would go on that pad once it's been developed to that stage. So that's why it's excluded from the scope of L and M project. Um, to answer one of your chicken and egg dilemmas from an active point of view, this will typically be handled from an open ended RFP, where you put out a solicit for, we want to have a tea hanger. Here's the current situation. You find a developer who's willing to wait the two or three years for us to finance the development of the site while they are committing to develop. Here once that's completed, usually with financial incentives.
Well, I think going back, my point was, we need to have an understanding of what we want to have on the facility. You know, I understand what you're saying about what the scope was meant to be for this study, but I think for us, maybe going forward, we really need to think about, I'm not just waiting for somebody to come to us, but maybe that's why we do the RFP, because we need to say, these are the parameters we have to fit within because we know the light pollution is it, so we know et cetera, et cetera. So I think that's the thing that we want to nail down. So it's not back and forth over multiple years trying to figure out what's going to work. So anyway, we could beat this one to death, chicken and egg, we could say that overall because it's true, but it's, there's some pieces I think we all need to understand or the next council needs to understand before they get started. The RFP piece process was definitely up there.
I guess, I guess we're, my feeling if somebody else had it, is like, what's so hard is, is when you have these things and I, I checked out one in, uh, um, five point one and then, um, there's another thing, land acquisition, federal lease management. I'm not sure what they're referring to, to and there. And I guess to me is, is, I, I just would hate to see that we're promoting our airport and somebody comes along and says, oh, I'd like to do this, and we also find right at the start, it's a no go because we don't know what it is, you know. I guess I just found this, this report lacking a whole pile of what I was hoping to.
So through the mayor to council, like, as, as was noted, these, these items were identified by the engineering firm that did the design. And staff can't address some of those items because we don't have the technical data to back up any statements for that. This report reflects the best information available to staff with the limited amount of time that was available to repair it. And using our best judgment, best professional judgment in developing the recommendation.
So. I think moving forward, then if we do what you stated earlier, making sure it moves forward, it doesn't just get knocked off the table, then somehow staff needs to help council identify next steps. If something like this is ever to come to fruition, we need to understand what the next steps are. Because right now, we're not really sure what we don't know in terms of some of the technical data, and I understand, and I appreciate what you were stating earlier, but I think there has to be some way that we can flush it out a bit more. So when somebody comes and says, hey, we would like to invest one point seven million in building this, this or that, we can say, yes, we can, instead of, we have no idea. And that's where I'm at now. And, and that's good. It's, this helps us understand where we're at and how do we get to the next stage.
So I guess going back to what you said a little bit earlier, Gerald, is rather than someone moving that motion there to bring back to Canada, or council, to put it on the five year plan. Cause my concern is that when it's on the five year plan, it also pops up at budget time. You know, we need to. In a way of saying, this is on the five year plan and we'll only go to the next step once we find that wants to develop.
So that is one of the policy cho- choices council can make is to establish that as a firm go no go decision.
Hearing from council is that you're saying, okay, yeah, I'm good to go to the next step, but we have to have not the chicken and egg, but a dancing partner to go to the party with. You know, somebody has to come along and say, yep, um, I'm, I'm interested in developing this property. And it would, it would take more work.
So I agree in half of that and other half I'm a little reticent because I'm thinking that I, I'd like us to get to another step and then freeze there until we get the proponent. I think we're still too far away from really understanding what, what the big picture, if we were able to just identify a little more. And I don't know how to quantify that right now, but, uh, I don't, I still feel we'd be almost starting from scratch if somebody came to us and we want to do this. That's what I was saying before. I don't want to be at that zero spot, but maybe a step or two into it and stopping before we're spending large amounts of dollars, because I agree with you. We might be waiting ten years or longer, maybe it's four, we don't know. But at this point, do we just walk away without any more information? I don't know. I'd like to have another step. I'm a lot more money into it.
And how much time is this, is this taking you, say over the last year, some average, so how many hours per month do you put into this?
So averaging it over the last, last year, um, really for staff, the big investment of time was working with L and M to have the, have the report, the engineering report developed, and then the staff time to research and prep the RFD for this meeting. Vincent could speak more to, um, the amount of time involved with this specific RFD, but, um, as of right now, there hasn't been any pursuit for developing these tea hangers, tea hanger laws, because it's, at this point, it's not a financial or strategic objective of the district of Vanderhoof.
Yeah, and, and I can appreciate that, but, you know, we've just invested twenty six thousand dollars in having a study done. And then what I'm hearing Vincent say is that, um, to take it to the next step, we have to have a firmer idea of what we would want on that property. And maybe that is something that we need to discuss a little further, just so we can understand what the next step is. The council have a firmer idea.
Yeah, what, what, what would you like to, what information would you like to have that discussion?
Oh, what kind of, of building do you, what kind of a hanger do you want? What, you know, Vincent talked about lighting and that's going to impact, uh, some of the missing pieces in this study. That's, that's how I'm understanding it anyway. Know exactly what kind of a building we want there, um, because that's going to fill in some of those missing pieces that aren't in the study.
Would that not be the person that built it? It wouldn't be us building. We, we would not be building the building.
No, no.
It would be somebody that came with a vision of what they wanted to see in the building.
So then those missing pieces can't be filled in then? Yeah, I understand we're not building it, but how, yeah. Request for proposal, then if you would, then we'd have to know what we wanted, wouldn't we?
Through the mayor to council, so it's kind of a three way catch twenty two. I think the conversation should start at, uh, more of your airport development strategy. We, it's not enough, I think, just to look at the tea hanger. I think you kind of got to look at the other buildings to develop and then your collective like mission and other operational logistics around that. Once you know that, you would probably want to sink another couple grand into, uh, tea hanger projects. You can get an idea of what a tea hanger would look like. Consult professionals, say what are the necessary elements of a tea hanger? Where would that lighting be? What? And then that way you can kind of quantify what that building would look like in relation to other projected development. To make sure that overall it meets these minimum standards for noise reduction, safety, light destruction, all that stuff. So if you start with just a tea hanger, you may be obstructing yourself from certain future developments. And the last thing is that our Vanderhoof airport is a registered aero drone, but not a certified airport. So that does ease the restrictions on this up there a bit.
No, I'm really confused. Yes.
So they only, don't, the recommendation from staff is only to deal with the question of whether or not this should be to be in the financial plan. It's not a recommendation to say, staff, go ahead and start seeking someone to go develop these, bring us back to the tea hanger plan. It's not even to approve a tea hanger plan. The question of light pollution and other items can be addressed at the building permit stage for these, these things. So my recommendation and the recommendation of staff is to add this to the five year financial plan and have, or to have this scheduled for debate during financial plan deliberations and whether or not it should be placed in the five year financial plan.
I like that.
Okay.
I think I'll second that.
Now that we know what we don't know, let's do that. No, but that to me makes sense. My thought process.
Discuss it when it gets to that point.
Okay, we got a speaker's list, sir.
And then that would, that would flag it for being part of our strategic plan moving forward.
Does everybody, does everybody want to hear the, going back to the procedure bylaw? Uh, do you want to hear the motion re-read back? Did you, you know, reread Gerald's motion back to us that was moved by?
That council, um, bring forward the tea hanger study for deliberation for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty seven financial plan as a five year capital planning item. Based on the twenty twenty one cost estimate of, uh, one million eight hundred and ten thousand dollars for full site development with financing options to be identified by staff.
So when you move, move. Any more discussion? All in favor, opposed, carried? I agree.
So through, through the mayor to council, uh, this report was also authored by our management intern, um, who is here to speak to any questions council may have on the report and the recommendation.
Go ahead, Vincent. This one, if you, this, this one, we do have a lot of passion for around the table here. So the thing is, is, yeah, this is, this is an important. This one, if you, this, this one, we do have a lot of passion for around the table here. So the thing is, is, yeah, this is, this is an important topic for us here.
The mayor to council, I admit this report is quite lengthy, so I don't mind offering you some click notes. The report summarizes the proof of development concept report, which is a nice 80-page report if you got some time to read through that. Um, but basically it's identifying some of the strengths we hope to see in a lead agency. So most of your foundry centers across BC are operated by one not-for-profit lead agency who partners with other organizations in the community to offer a minimum spectrum of services, mostly focusing on mental health, substance use, both a very open, no barrier access, making it ways so that LGBTQ youth can join it, that there's reduced stigma, that it's accessible, and it's appropriately timed to the needs of the youth. Um, the function of foundry centers, I feel like you're very familiar with. There's a couple scenarios from the initial proof of concept period. Campbell River, Prince George, and Abbotsford that I've highlighted as they do have similar challenges that Vanderhoof would see. And I really wish I'd reread this a little bit earlier so I could recall all of them, but the biggest one that stood out to me was Abbotsford. Uh, Abbotsford is located in the Bible Belt and they're a very conservative community. And one of the biggest challenges that they faced is and similar to Campbell River, that's a smaller community, is that youth seeking mental health and substance use services may not be comfortable in accessing them because your primary care facilitator might be a family friend of someone, or they're worried about the location being identified by their community members. And then that being disclosed kind of compromise that confidentiality. Um, the report talks about different strengths that you want to see in a lead agency, such as relationship building, being able to empower youth as care seekers. So kind of changing that mentality that with youth, there isn't something wrong with them and we're not trying to prescribe things. We're trying to say, how do you want to be helped? What help do you think you need? So that they feel more empowered to take control as they transition from their younger years to adult years, that they're not left behind, that they have those skills to manage their healthcare as an adult. And the request here is that council kind of has that discussion to identify who they would like to see as a lead agency. Count, uh, staff will, as per recommendations, try and coordinate a meeting, but it isn't here competition necessarily for us to just go contact individual organizations, be needing some feedback and direction on who should be invited to that or who should receive this information. Uh, one thing that was not included in here that was found afterwards was that there is a foundry center opening up in Burns Lake, I did see funding. That's being operated by Carrier Sakani Family Services. As we saw with their youth center, they seem to be capable of kind of handling this mantra. Whether or not they have the capacity operating that center in addition to the new center would be a challenge. Um, additionally, as far as the hub and spoke model goes, that we were recommended through our U V C M, they're using a mobile center. So they've outfitted an RV or some sort of van that drives the community centers on a varied schedule to make sure that services are available in the smaller communities for those who cannot travel to Burns Lake.
So I've been on a whole bunch of their calls and they've talked about their foundry center and hoping to buy a piece of property. But they've never talked about, they have a mobile home that they have, if, if, you say that travels up to those other areas.
That's something that I may not be set in stone. When I had spoken to the project manager reading the foundry in Burns Lake, Randy Moore, that uh, was an option that she said that they were exploring.
Oh, they're exploring it. Okay, because in the, in, yeah.
I heard the same thing, uh, at the same presentation and very similar to what you just stated. So it sounds like they're initially going to go that route until they have a long-term home. So I wouldn't be surprised if that.
So I guess to me is, is, you must have shortlisted. You know, maybe somewhat, like, is this where we want to talk about carriers, Sakani, or other nonprofits that we should be talking to? Is that what we want to do here, Gerald, you know, or keep me out of trouble here? Um, or is, do we just want to ask staff to go and come back and publish? We want to have that discussion.
Through the mayor to council, I'm going to actually turn this over to our management intern. However, before, um, doing that, I would remind council that we are in a public meeting and that to refrain from any comments that would be more permissible to discuss under section 91A and B of the charter.
Thank you, uh, for this, CEO, to mayor and council. As a matter of fact, the adjacent foundry lead agencies in Prince George is the YMCA and then where it's lake is. The Ministry of Mental Health and Substance Use Services did provide us with a list of different, uh, resources and nonprofit organizations, which is attached to this report. And it lists some players like Conexus, the Omenica Lakes Mental Health and Addictions Advisory Committee, and a few options for you to consider, but it is not exhaustive. If you have other ideas, then we'd be open to hearing those suggestions. Appropriate time.
Some comments, if I'd like to do that in a different meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I have one last question. Who, there was a number of us at the youth center. Is, is this something that can be operated in conjunction? What, what would hinder it from operating, not operating in conjunction with?
Uh, thank you, your worship. I don't believe that the foundry would impede on the mandate of the youth center. The foundry is more focused on that mental health and substance use services. Where it's my impression that the youth center is a little bit more of a collective hangout spot, not directly mandated towards health services and that kind of function. But more so for general meetings, providing the kitchen. Some of the stuff, a lot of the stuff that the youth center does provide is often incorporated into foundry centers to make it a more homely and approachable space. But their functions don't necessarily overlap. If that answers your question.
I think in order to protect confidentiality and anonymity, it'd be, it's, it's, that's a little bit small where you wouldn't have the office space and others or some of the counselors and the other aspects of the team there. Sometimes they have, they'll have medical people as well. And I know in Prince George, it's like that. Uh, when I visited their foundry a couple of years ago and talked to their staff. So I think exactly what you stated in terms of trying to make it more relaxed and really enticing for, for young people. I'm not sure if that's the place to have it because of that need. I go back to what I stated earlier around the statement and everything else. You walk in there, walk down a certain hallway and everybody else in that space sees you doing that, they know exactly what you're doing. So you have to be very careful in how that's understand what you're thinking, but it needs to be a little more private.
I, I can see it. So so I guess, um, I really like this report. Um, uh, so the council directs staff to coordinate a meeting to select organizations to begin discussions around establishing the center. Whether the council provide input on which organizations to employ preliminary, but we, we don't want to do that at this point, do we? We, we want to leave that to the next meeting, that second one. It, it, do we not just want to do the first, the first one?
Let me make a motion on that one and then have staff come back to us and to share what they've.
I would be in a camera meeting.
Yes, through the mayor to council, if there's particular organizations, council's interested in, um, having staff approach, that's really what the second paragraph is aimed at, to be revised by council. However, council does have the option of only going with the first paragraph to, to, before having that conversation about which organizations we may want to consider partnering with.
The thing is, is certainly just going to throw out, we have a relationship with the Y. We have a relationship with carriers can, we have a relationship with Conexus. Okay. You know, you know.
As I say, all, all three could be approached and then we can have a, in cameras and discussion around, you know, what, what they can.
And if there's any other, you know, I guess to me is, is any other that you feel that has a capacity and the local, you know, passion here for it. Is that, is that your motion?
I just wanted to add, I do know that I spoke to a representative from SD 91. And I had a very big conversation. They definitely said they would really want to know if we were trying to find partners. They would like to, to lend support if they had the opportunity. We know this, you know, operating, but definitely wants to be involved in some manner if they could.
I think, dude, on that note, would we not then identify partners such as SD 91 and maybe, uh, medical health, you know? Um, you know, doctors or clinics or, you know, kind of the same.
I'll speak to that. Uh, through this, CEO, to mayor and council. So it's not so much about picking a lead agency as much as it is approaching different organizations. If first, like, let's say CSFS did decide to be the lead agency, we would still want to be reaching out to YMCA, Conexus, SD 91 for those partnership organizations to help support CSFS in establishing a relationship. Likewise, if we only approach CSFS, they may take it upon themselves to reach out to other partners like SD 91, YMCA, et cetera. It's more at this point, just sharing the information, getting that conversation started so that they know that there is support through the district and that if they need extra resources, perhaps let the conversation start. But at this time, it doesn't appear that any of these organizations are taking the lead on it themselves. Those things were just having enough, too, enough discussions and getting some momentum of like and cause, some, so they do so. And if we do identify one lead agency, then letting them sort out that discussion might be more fruitful.
That all can be accomplished, uh, Vincent Gerald, with this motion that we, that we have put forward. Am I right?
So through the mayor to council, the core policy question is really which, which agencies should we consider partnering with as the lead agency for foundry? The supporting organizations fall into place afterwards. We need someone to carry this proposal to the, to the finish line before we can get to that next step of which agencies can support us.
So I think having that ability to approach them all and then maybe where they're discussing it amongst themselves, somebody will make that decision. Based on the support they can. They not go the way we think, right? But, uh, depends on the capacity base big time.
I think going back to our success with Parkview, we noticed that Parkview would not have happened if we had just left it to Conexus. Uh, to, period. Uh, sorry, constant weekly input. Hey, we have a motion on the floor? All in favor? Oppose? Curried? Motion to adjourn to go on camera, council will hold that in camera meeting, meeting following the adjournment of May 24th. Committee as a whole and that this meeting be closed to the public pursuit to, to the charter to discuss acquisition, disposition, and exploitation of land for improvements and negotiations between you municipal service and the FOIP poll request under sections 91E. And I'll further, all persons other than the mayor, council, and staff, be excluded from the B. All in favor? Motion, carried. To, to, to adjourn the committee as a whole. All in favor? Carry. Let's have five minutes.